It's six o'clock and we'll call the meeting to order. If you will please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and stay standing for the invocation. Robin Crowthers.
Would seek to employ your grace and mercy upon this meeting. And as we think about it, we would pray first for the police chief, Chief Egan, as he is recovering from surgery and difficulties. We pray your healing hand will be upon him, that he quickly be back to full health and in the midst of his duties, doing all that he enjoys and loves. And Lord, we pray also for this council, from the mayor and each and every individual. Lord, they have their duties that are pertinent to what they do here. But Lord, they have lives elsewhere, and in those lives, we always have stuff that causes us to be concerned, that we need to take before your throne of grace and seek your mercies for. Our Lord, we pray for mercies for the police department as a whole. Our Lord, we listen to the news, and the more we listen, the more we realize there's so many crazies out there that put their life and limb in danger. So, Lord, protect them, look after them, care for their families, bring peace to their families. Lord, save what you said for our firefighters. And, uh, Lord, we would seek that they also would have that protection that only you could give. And, Lord, the city employees, they go about their duties and look after them. And, Lord, we pray wisdom for this council, pray your mercies upon this city. And all that we pray, I ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. And Michael, if you'll take the roll call, please.
Councilman Lloyd.
Here.
Councilman Schleck.
Present.
Councilman Barr.
Here.
Councilman Marcos.
Here.
Councilman Valerius.
Here.
Councilwoman Nick.
Here.
And Mayor McLeod.
Here.
We have a quorum, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Schleck.
Second.
Second by Mr. Valerius. Any corrections or changes? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the April ninth meeting?
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Valerius.
Second.
Second by Mr. Barr. Any corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. Organizational business.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Council, residents of Allen Park. Uh, we have MDOT construction on Southfield, uh, from Pinecrest Drive to Ford Road. Uh, is expected to start on April twenty-ninth and last until October fifteenth. Uh, Wayne County construction on Pelham Road, uh, from Ecourse to Van Born Road started two weeks ago and is expected to be completed by the fall of 2024. For Reek Road construction, the contractor is working on the area between Malon and Wick Road. Restoration will begin for the section of Reek Road from the Creek to Goddard Road around May first. And a reminder that Reek Road is fully closed at Goddard Road. We have two bridge projects, Reek Road at the Sexton Kilfoil Drain and on the Southfield Service Drive at the Ecourse Creek. Both are expected to start sometime, uh, in July or August, according to our contacts at MDOT and Fishback Engineers. And those are expected to be, remain closed through sometime in mid-November, I believe. Uh, Pinecrest Drive Project, as I mentioned last time, was, uh, scheduled to begin May, uh, mid to late, uh, May. Just to add to the whole mess of over there at, at the Southfield, Pinecrest, Pelham area. Sorry about that. Uh, Champagne Park, uh, work on the baseball fields, Diamonds Two and Three has been finished. And the construction of parking lot started last week, uh, continues with grading and the replacement of the concrete approaches. Uh, paving should begin within the next ten days. And again, that's going to be weather permitting. I think everything at this point in time of the, the season is going to be weather permitting, uh, for those starts. Uh, Savon cement, as, as we mentioned earlier in the, uh, pre-meeting, uh, they began, began working on the, uh, repairing the wall attached to Cinerama at the old show property. In the next three to five days, they'll begin removing the old asphalt parking lot along the, uh, White Street, uh, area and preparing that for topsoil and grass seed. In that, uh, area was the DDA, uh, streetlight project. We got some, uh, staging going on over there at the, uh, in the parking lot. Contractor for the, uh, for that project is waiting for DT, uh, DTE to finish marking all the gas mains and services before they can begin construction, but that should begin shortly. We, reminder, budget work session to review the proposed twenty-four, twenty-five budget is scheduled for Tuesday, May seventh at six o'clock. And, uh, second one, uh, as part of the American Bloom CN Rail Grant, uh, for the Historical Museum landscaping project, there'll be a media event, uh, on two, June, Thursday, June sixth at three o'clock at the Historical Museum. And then just a congratulations to two employees for reaching milestone years with, uh, service with the city, and that's Emily Wallant, DPS. Uh, you remember Emily was here at City Hall, is the treasurer. And now, if you call over to DPS with any issues, you, that's who you end up talking to, uh, most likely. So, ten years for Emily Wallant on April twenty-eighth. And then, uh, congratulations, uh, coming up here on April twenty-ninth for Lieutenant Michael Hillock. He'll reach twenty-five years with the city of Allen Park. Uh, I, I go through the list and the, there's only a few that are hitting that milestone. I know, uh, Lieutenant Hillock coming up, and I think Chief Egan's going to be coming up at the end, in September, um, but they're few and far between as they go through, so. But congratulations to both those and more, and big congratulations to Lieutenant Hillock as twenty-five years of service here with the city of Allen Park and the Allen Park Police Department.
Thank you. May I have a motion to accept and file the administrator's report?
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Lloyd.
Second.
Second by Mr. Marcos. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is accepted. Uh, we will now move into the, um, public comment section, which is, uh, four minutes. All we ask is that you give your name and the street on which you live. Do not give us the full address. And please keep in mind that this is the, uh, opportunity to share concerns or present topics to city council, but there is no dialogue or debate with the council. Um, if there is, uh, something that needs to be handled by one of our departments, we do have a form at the podium. We ask that you complete it so it can be given to the appropriate department for handling. Thank you.
Good evening, City Council Mayor. Ray McGus and Quant. That's the last meeting I brought up, and I was very, very concerned about, uh, the young kids. They're running down park. Taking care of those kids, taking care of our citizens. Yesterday, I was working with a number of our people at the Historical House, and I watched those kids come out, and they blatantly circled a car. The car had to stop dead right on the highway. They did wheelies around the car. They gave the finger to the person, and that needs to end now. I'd like a police report. Ask them right now through the chair if they can go ahead and tell us what we, as citizens, can do other than calling nine-one-one. And by the time they send a vehicle out there, they're gone. If one of them hit our cars or we end up hitting one of them, I'd like to know what's going to, what their recourse is going to be. So, I'm putting everybody on notice right now, including our police department, that this needs to end. I'm very concerned. I've been up here a number of times. I've been talking to individuals up here a number of times. I know you're not going to answer me unless until the very end, but this needs to end. These are ga, this is a gang. They call themselves a gang, and that's how they act. It needs to stop. One of them are going to end up getting killed or very maimed, or one of the individuals are going to end up having a heart attack in their cars, and they're going to run that vehicle into a building or into a tree. That's the only reason I'm up here. It needs to end. Thank you very much. Have a great day. Please do something about it.
Thank you, Ray.
Edwardsbacher, Meyer Avenue. Um, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Thank you, Mark Kibbe, for everything that everybody does for our great community. On the thirteenth of this month, the Beautification Commission had a citywide cleanup. We had a humongous turnout of volunteers. Guest mate was a ride around a hundred and fourteen. Not only would I'd like to thank everybody that showed up from the council members, other members of the community, but, um, like to thank Lowe's Home Improvement Center. They provided us with the cleanup supplies. Uh, Detroit Wing Company, they provided the, uh, food for, afterwards for the volunteers. The Allen Park High School Football Team and, um, other members of the community. I think we were all overwhelmed because typically there's about fifteen to twenty of us out there. Um, many of the, um, many events are going to be coming to the city this summer. Everything from the, uh, Car Show, Maiden, Michigan, the, um, Street Fair, and of course the Allen Park Citizen Civic Fund, annual pizza, wine, and beer. All these organizations will be in need of volunteers to ensure success of each one. And of course, our city always benefits from all. So, um, there's a complete, um, listing of all the events in the city on the city website. And if anybody watching could, uh, um, go to the website and, uh, contact one of the, whether it's the Downtown Development Authority, the, uh, Allen Park Citizen Civic Fund, or the, um, Festivities Commission for these events would be most appreciative. And also, uh, the Allen Park Citizen Civic Fund on June twentieth of this year will be hosting our annual event again, our fundraiser. It's largest one for the nonprofit of the year, and that's our pizza, wine, and beer. So, that's June twentieth. It runs from six o'clock to nine o'clock. And again, I think we'll have another great turnout again. Tomorrow night, back with the APCCF, Allen Park's, uh, Citizens, Community Civic Citizens Fund. Uh, we're going to be holding a fundraiser from open to close at Culvers. Uh, anybody that comes out to Culvers, when they purchase a, um, concrete mixer, uh, Culvers is going to donate one dollar per each, each one of those sold to the organization. No need to present, uh, um, a flyer or mention APCCF. That's all I have. I'm winded.
Thank you.
Charles Blunt Champagne, looking green and blue. First off, I just want to say, um, this is not an Allen Park, um, uh, event, but a Down River event that's coming up in June for Pride Month. In Wyandotte, they're going to have a Pride Festival over there, uh, June twenty-first, June, and June twenty-second. Um, something else occurring in, uh, city of Dearborn, I'm not sure if occurring in Allen Park, but someone that works in Dearborn, we've been having a lot of situations with coyotes. So, I just wanted to make sure that, um, just so people are aware if they have small pets at night, to make sure they are watching them when they take them out to their, uh, backyards and, um, or for a walk. Um, great job to our police department. I know they've been, um, sometimes on the news and, uh, some good stories happening in Allen Park. And, um, just a suggest, suggestion, again, working at night, that for the police department to maybe, uh, sit at Roosevelt and Southfield, you can get some free tickets right there. People going through that, no turn on red, but just, just in, uh, for our police department. Um, the, uh, just a suggestion for our government page, um, for when the Historical Commission, I know they had a, we're going to have an event for the, uh, uh, council and cop in the corner thing, that just advertise it so then people can be more informed on more events happening in our city. Support our local businesses. I did go to that, um, Moore City Meat Pies on Allen Road, very good. And just some, another suggestion, I saw, uh, city Lincoln Park, their mayor, they, um, they, he posts on his Facebook page of like, where am I at? And just, yeah, something fun to keep supporting our local businesses and sharing around different, uh, businesses in our city. And then also speaking of our mayors, um, last four years, I know I kept talking about wanting to have the mayor pictures put up. I know we have our three of them. Uh, there's fourteen mayors. I believe that they all deserve to have, um, their picture up, whether you agree with their politics or whatever in the past situations, but I think they deserve, whether it's in the com, uh, conference room or somewhere, um, they should be put up because they got new frames at one point, so, um, for their photos. Um, the, the APCCF event for the beer wine thing, I can't wait. Hopefully there's another raffle so I can get another lovely photo because I know that was the joke last time, uh, that, uh, picture got. Uh, please go and support that as well. Um, and then again, I know it's budget season. Again, as I said last meeting, you have two new council members. They're going to ask questions. Please be patient with them. Like I said, when I got in council, um, I asked a lot of questions and I know, um, um, Mr. Marcos, he would always ask questions when he first got on and so. So, again, just be patient with our brand-new council members. Um, again, it's only been six months, so, since guys got sworn in, possibly, or five months, but, um, but, um, again, just keep up the good work. Yeah, you guys are one team, just like the Detroit Lions. Um, another suggestion with the giant tire, light blue for them. I know it's, won't be as great as that lovely Detroit sign that they put up on ninety-four. They, it's been looking better with the, uh, flowers and stuff, but again, maybe we can have a giant Allen Park sign one day, but other than that, I hope everyone has a wonderful, uh, couple of weeks and stay positive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, point of information. He was right about fourteen mayors, but it also included four village presidents. So, there was eighteen photos. And our final village president was a Schaefer, by the way.
He was the first, wasn't he?
Schwass was the first, then Lineback Blue Sea. Okay, we stopped.
A history lesson. Well, if no one else is coming in for, we will close public comments and move on to the consent agenda, which tonight consists of purchasing claims and accounts in the payroll report and a license permit for a Cabrini advancement parade on June eighth. Motion, please.
Motion.
Uh, I have Nick and Marcos, in that order. They're practicing to be a duet. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. Resolutions. Resolution one is to waive the city bid process as there is no economic benefits and sole provider, um, approves the fire department request to purchase a remount, one Braun Express plus type-one ambulance mounted on a Ford F-450 at a cost of three-hundred-and-eight-thousand-eight-hundred-and-six dollars with, um, ten percent down payment with funds from account four-zero-one-triple-zero-nine-eighty-five-zero-zero-two. Motion, please.
Motion. Support.
Motion by Mr. Barr, supported by Mr. Schleck.
Through the chair, if I may, the, the, a dollar amount is correct, but the type of vehicle is not a remount. This will be a brand-new purchase.
Okay, not a remount. We have to do, uh...
The remount was the, uh, purchase from a couple of months ago.
Yeah. Okay, so this is to purchase one Braun Express plus type-one ambulance, correct? Is that all right with the, uh, individuals who did the motion?
Since I look at the memo and it says ambulance mounted on, so it's not a remount.
Yeah, it's just not a remount.
Right.
Chief O'Reilly.
All right, good evening. Uh, I'm here to ask for, uh, approval to purchase a Braun ambulance to replace our two thousand and fifteen ambulance. Um, this would be a Ford, on a Ford chassis, uh, four-wheel drive, and, um, it would be a gas engine instead of a diesel. So, we're moving away from the diesel to help with maintenance costs and their, and initial purchase cost. Uh, the current timeframe right now, um, that Kodiak and Braun, the manufacturer's putting out is two and a half years, um, to get in line. So, this, um, ambulance is going to be budgeted across the three years to, uh, pay for that. We would have to put a ten percent down, uh, at the signing of this. The, and the Braun ambulance does have an, an all-aluminum body on it, on the box, and that is one of the things that we use, um, to make sure that we can clean the inside. It doesn't have any particle board or plywood where fluids or things like that can get in, soak in, that we can't clean it. Um, we've purchased a Braun since two thousand and fifteen, been extremely happy with their quality. Uh, and a couple of months ago, we approved a remount, so we're taking that one and repurposing it, remounting it because the quality's so good. And that is the plan for this one down the road, uh, when the chassis expires, um, to remount that box on a new chassis to save money.
Thank you. Any, uh, questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is approved. Second resolution is to approve the fire department's request to donate, sell, and/or scrap old firefighting equipment that is no longer needed or that has been replaced with newer technology. Motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Marcos, second by Mr. Valerius. Phil O'Reilly.
Okay. Uh, again, I'm here for approval to, um, donate, sell, or scrap some of our old equipment that we no longer use. Um, we keep a lot of things, anything that we replace, we keep. In case something breaks down, we can reuse it. Um, the equipment that we're looking at, this is equipment that we, most of it's from when I started back twenty-five years ago. So, this stuff is the old brass stuff, um, that no one really uses. We have some things that are in the middle, uh, maybe ten, twelve years old. We have enough backup for those old nozzles, um, and connections. We have some old jaws equipment that's still good for a small department, volunteer department, or someone that would like to purchase it from us. Um, it's still good quality equipment. It's just we've been able to get some FEMA grants to replace that with state-of-the-art equipment that cuts the new metal on the cars better and faster.
Thank you. Any questions? If I'm not mistaken, we have donated in the past to, um, a, a unit in Detroit where the individuals helped us with grant writing. Is that correct?
Yes, we actually donated, um, that equipment to the, um, Gerald E. Ford, uh, firefighting, uh, Tactical School, um, out of the, um, it's in Westland at the, yeah, um, I forget the name of the high school. But we've donated equipment there. We've donated equipment to the Wayne County Fire Academy as well. And some of this equipment, we're going to ask them what they need, um, and let them have their pick through before we scrap the rest.
Great form of recycling.
Absolutely.
There's no questions. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you.
Thank you.
It's been approved. Our next resolution is to waive the city bid process as there's no economic advantage for a Wyngarts GSA bid price and approve the Parks and Recreation Department's purchase of one commercial X-Mark Laser X Series lawnmower in the amount of thirteen-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty-nine dollars with funds from account one-zero-one-seven-fifty-one-nine-thirty-four-triple-zero. Motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Marcos.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lloyd, who is going to come and speak to us about this lawnmower.
Kyle.
Good evening, Mayor Council. Uh, as Rob spoke about in the, um, work session, this is a addition to the fleet. Um, we currently have four of these exact model X-Marks. Um, two of them are actually two thousand and eighteen's, not two thousand and twenty-one's. Um, the hours are getting up there. They usually, I mean, you guys know we have nineteen parks. They get beat up quite quickly, cutting every week, bouncing around because it's not like cutting a parking lot. It's cutting hills and sticks and bricks and everything you find in a park. So, we're just now starting to get through the cycle, starting to cycle them out as we get older. And we do, we're already down one at this point in the year with a recall that we can't use it right now. So, we're already down to three. These are on, onsite. We should get it pretty quickly from Wyngarts. We purchased all the other ones through the same dealer, same salesman, so.
Anyone have any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, is approved. Our next resolution is to approve the noise ordinance waiver for MDOT for project two-one-one-three-three-two, which is for work on M thirty-nine Southfield from Pinecrest to M one fifty-three Ford Road. Motion, please.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Barr.
Second.
Second by Mr. Valerius.
This, uh, this is a request for the project I mentioned earlier during my report that's going to start, uh, April twenty-ninth and last throughout, uh, until October fifteenth. Um, Wayne, uh, MDOT is looking for a waiver request, and that waiver, uh, under the construction, under our ordinance, would be from six PM until seven AM so they can do nighttime work for this. Um, they feel that's a lot safer. Uh, it'll be less impacted on traffic, but a lot safer for their workers as they'll be able to, um, close down, uh, a little bit better. They're going to be also doing some full shutdowns as well, and I think that when they do the full shutdowns, that'll be when you'll really see the nighttime work at that point.
And that's on both sides of the freeway also. My, our understanding is that Dearborn has already approved the labor.
Yeah, Dearborn and Dearborn Heights have both, both approved their waiver. We, Dearborn was first, uh, a couple of months ago, or about, maybe a month ago.
Anyone have any comments or questions?
Yeah, well, they tell us ahead of time when they're going to do the full shutdowns since I live right here.
Yeah, it's, so, I get the, uh, I get an email through MDOT, and I try to post those up on the Facebook as much as we can, but I'll make sure we send those out to council because it, Southfield definitely has a, a major impact on our travel ways. I try to post them up there more so, so I don't forget. I figure if I go through the, the exercise, I won't forget that I'm driving to that construction zone, wondering what am I doing? But, yeah, they, they usually let us know ahead of time for, for full closures.
Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is approved. Last one is a resolution of support of the Great Lakes and St. Lawrence City's Economic Transformation Initiative. Motion.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Barr.
Second.
I'm sorry, Mr., I'll get it, Mr. Schleck. I'm looking at you and look, I'm thinking of somebody else. Second by Mr. Lloyd. Um, I will read the resolution, which you will be very happy to know, I reduced greatly from the three-pager that was suggested by the authority. No. Resolution to support the Great Lakes and St. Lawrence City's Economic Transformation Initiative, whereas the Great Lakes and St. Lawrence River Basin forms the largest freshwater ecosystem in the world, providing drinking water to more than forty million people and serving as the foundation of their community's economic prosperity. And whereas heavy industry and manufacturing has predominated in parts of the basin, often degrading the water quality and perpetuating environmental challenges in disadvantaged communities. And whereas Illinois and Michigan are two Great Lakes states that are establishing themselves as leaders in the clean energy revolution, having signed into state law ambitious plans to expand clean and renewable energy, reduce greenhouse gas emissions, and create jobs in the climate sector. And whereas building a thriving freshwater economy requires attracting green and blue industries to foster job creation and climate and water innovation, harnessing clean, accessible waterfronts as drivers of economic revitalization and equitable communities, implementing clean and renewable energy sources to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and build livable communities, and expanding sustainable, integrated, and... livable communities, and expanding sustainable, integrated, and waterborne commerce, mobility, and tourism. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Allen Park pledges to work closely with the city's initiative and its members to guide the Mayor's Commission on Economic Transformation and advance its mission as the city's initiative launches the Mayor's Commission on Economic Transformation and its annual conference in Montreal, Quebec, May 15th through 17th, 2024, develops the action plan for the Great Lakes and St. Lawrence Economic Transformation, 2025 through 2035, and maps paths for municipal action to support industrial, energy, transportation, and waterfront transformation. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you very much. And now we will move on to council comments. And this evening, we will start with Mr. Barr.
First thing I want to say is welcome to all of our visitors because of the NFL Draft. Our hotels in the area are pretty solid with bookings. I did talk to a GM, and that's what, that's what I was told. As for the citizens' comments, thank you all for coming up. Your comments have been noted. Let's see, lately, the last two weeks, I've done, I've attended the library board meeting that we had. Interesting for my first one. Talking about a lot of things about books and what they're doing for the summertime projects. Congratulations to the milestone service years staff members. Several people have contacted me while I was walking around and driving around the city. They're thanking me because they are noticing our ci, our city is looking a lot better and we're being more responsive. Lately, I was up in, what is it, Princeton Estates on Howard Drive, had some people question me, and I said, "I'm just out here doing what I, trying to get to know you guys." The area is definitely changing. I think it's for the better. I'm sorry, Chief, that I missed the fire department award ceremony. Totally forgot about it. Also, May coming up is Motorcycle Awareness Month. As a motorcyclist, it's not only for us to be more observant, it's also for automobile and truck drivers to also please be observant of us. Other than that, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schleck.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, Councilman Barr covered a lot of things I'm going to cover, but I just want to say first and foremost, I want to wish Chief Egan a speedy recovery. And I wanted to say since our last meeting, as Ed mentioned, that the Beautification Commission had a cleanup event, Good Neighbor Saturday, it was a great success for all those that came out. Thank you for coming out for that. And rest assured, if you didn't get to this one, there'll be many more, but you can always come out, help clean. The next one is scheduled with the Beautification Commission on May 18th at 10:00 AM. More details to come from them. I also attended the Allen Park Fire Department Award Ceremony, so I wanted to extend my congratulations to everyone who received awards that night, but also thanks to the police and fire, DPS, and all the city employees that work so hard on a regular basis to make sure our city is safe. And I also wanted to extend thank you before I go into football. I wanted to say thank you to all the bowlers that came out in the area the last two to three weeks. They had several tournaments going on, pretty high-profile events at Thunder Bowl. So thank you for coming out. I hope you got to enjoy our city or the area, and hopefully you will return. And then finally to say, we're all here, up here supporting the Lions, and I'm sure everyone will say about that. So thank you to the NFL for hosting their event here, and a special thanks to the Detroit Lions. I wish them the best of luck and one pride. Make us proud, and I can't wait for the season to begin. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Floyd.
First to Ray. Mr. McGusson, I gotta, I gotta tell you, this is something that I've spent a great deal of time thinking about. And it's, it's impacted me as well. I mean, it's impacted many people. I live on Astro Avenue, right off of Park. So coming off of Southfield Road down Park Avenue is a very common route for me. I have been going down that road on dark and had to like swerve to miss a child before. I have to tell you, I know many of these kids, I've talked to them for them, and I'm not excusing the behavior. I'm not. I don't, I don't know what can be done as far as policing it. It's one of those problems that, like, like you say, like by the time a squad car gets there, that they're, they're often gone. And so I think that there has to be a more creative solution to this problem. Once upon a time, we had a gentleman, a young man, a middle schooler, he came up here and he spoke very eloquently about the need for a skate park in the city of Allen Park. Councilman Valerius mentioned that he was a BMX bike rider once upon a time, which I can get that mental image in my head. But I, I, I was, I was playing with my son Robbie this Saturday up at, I always, it's called Barney Park, but that's not what it's really called. Which one is it?
Duda.
Duda, thank you.
Great.
Yeah, great park. Oh, on the list, right? Yeah, there you go, on the list. Duda Park. And there was three or four kids, middle school age, and they were all riding around in the park doing wheelies in there because they love that safety stuff, because they like to practice there. So when they fall down, that, you know, it, it works. It's obviously, it's very expensive and it works. It's not ideal around an 18-month-old or other kids. And I know that there's not easy solutions, and I know that we can't build a skate park overnight or a bike lane, but you are absolutely right. It is, it, there, there has to be something that is addressed on, by it. I don't think that the answer is by policing it more. I think the answer is, is by giving our young people a place to do that safely. And I, and I, I see, and I, I would love to talk to you about it, because I don't know how it is that we are able to be able to, yeah, and that's okay, we can, we can disagree on that. But I think that oftentimes, that would just be, that would be going towards the problem and not, not the, the symptom and not the problem. So I, I'm a firm believer that a ounce of profession is worth a pound of cure. I firmly believe that. And so I promise that I will, I will work with my colleagues up here, work with our, our department heads, and we will find a solution. But I, I, I think that our, our police department is already working very hard to, to keep this community safe. And I don't know if, if we can, we don't have the resources to station a police officer on Park Avenue. But it, it is, it is not, not lost on me that the problem with it. Tangentially related to that, it is, as springtime's happening, all of the track teams and their distance runners are out and they are running. Unfortunately, we had a member of the Allen Park Track and Field Team was struck by a vehicle. He's okay, he's, he's doing fine, he's recovering. I am often out there running, and I have attention deficit disorder. So that is something that, you know, so just be very, very aware of those pedestrians, be very aware of those kids on bikes. You know, some of them, some of them, I don't, I don't think that any of them are, maybe some of them are being overtly malicious. But many of them are just being kids. So just be, be aware of them, much like our motorcycles. We can encourage them to be aware of you. That, that is very important. Allow me to become philosophical for a quick moment. It's a, some, this job can be incredibly challenging, and there's a quote that's been running through my mind. It, it comes from the Trial of Socrates. He was on trial in 399 BCE for corrupting the youth of Athens. And in there, there's a quote, and it's been ringing in my mind. "It is necessary that he who is earnest contends for justice. If he will be safe for but a short time, should live privately and take no part in public affairs." Given this job and the challenges that go with it, it's something that I think that he might have been on to something, you know, over, a little over a couple thousand years ago. And if you don't know how that story ends, they, they killed Socrates. So it's not necessarily a happy ending. However, I know that the work that we do up here is valuable and important. I know that it is important that we listen to the problems of our citizens, our community members, our neighbors, that we can help. And sometimes we can't. Sometimes all we can do is listen and, and, and talk about what the problem is, but sometimes we can't. With all the, having some turmoil going on in this job and having some problems, I was getting down on myself and getting down on the work that we do. And I was going down Champagne Road, and about nine months ago, at the very beginning of the school year, I had a parent complain that the lighting on Champagne Road in front of Benny and the high school's horrible, that kid was going to get hit, because the lighting was so bad. I brought it up to Mr. Kibbie and to Mr. Murray, and as I was fuming and in my own cloud of despair, I looked up and we got brand-new lights. I was like, "Oh, nice. We got, we got one done." And so I say that, I say that to, I am honestly more to my colleagues. It can be very frustrating work up here. It can be very, very challenging, especially to our new council people. As Councilman Blevins reminds us, it is a sharp learning curve. It's a sharp learning curve. But, but it is truly rewarding. And oftentimes, it's the work not of days or weeks or months, but a lot of times years. But we make a difference up here. And it means a lot to me, having not just my council members up here, but, you know, Joe, Mr. Kibbie, our, our department heads, that, that put this work in to make this a better place to live. And I think that, I think that Socrates might agree with me. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Nick.
All right. Want to give some shout-outs. Liberati's celebrating 22 years in business. I want to congratulate them. So, and the big tire that you see out there, yesterday was their 60th-year-old birthday. So, you know, 60 years. Also too, I want to thank Carrie from Rally House that's up on the hill. The shirts that you see that we're wearing today are from them. They are going to have a special guest up there on Saturday. Barry Sanders is going to be up there from 2:00 to 4:00, and Councilman Valerius and I might be working that. I've asked him, so, to help, to help me. So, so yes, so. So Carrie, thank you so much for, for the shirts. And so also too, on May 16th, I found out that you can go and have breakfast with the mayor. You can register at, I believe, Parks and Recs. I don't know if there's, I know there's limited seating. I'm not sure if there's still tickets available, but you can go have breakfast with the mayor. Chief Egan is doing better, so thank you everybody for understanding why we had to cancel that. He, because it's our first one, he really, really wanted to be there, and because of complications, he couldn't. So I did make the decision to postpone it until he could get better. So we will, we will post that, and hopefully it'll be sometime in May. I want to thank Tom Murray and the DPS. I reached out to him, and within, what, a day, he took care of the issue for me. So I appreciate that very much. And then, let's see. So if anybody is going down to the NFL Draft, I will be down there on Thursday. I'm not really sure how I'm getting down there yet, but, but I will. So along with, what was it, 1.5 million people? But so just be careful, and I will see you down there if you're down there Thursday. So everybody, have a good night.
Thank you. Mr. Valerius.
I just want to express thanks again, Nancy with the shirt. I don't own a piece of Lions apparel and didn't own a piece until today, so I appreciate that. Also, Ed was up here talking about the Good Neighbor Saturday cleanup. I attended that. The turnout was amazing, just like you mentioned, especially with the, the youth that showed up from Allen Park High School. It was amazing to see so many young people out there who were willing to come up and clean up. They may have got hours for it, but they were still out there. They still did what they needed to do and walked the neighborhoods and everything else. I was kind of on my own over on the northern Allen Park area, Melnap area, and I did have a couple of people come by and ask me specifically what I did to force me to clean up the streets. I wasn't even wearing a fluorescent vest or anything. I don't know if I looked like someone who was out there cleaning. And, and I basically just said I wasn't doing any community service. I just said the service I was doing was for the community in volunteering to clean up Allen Park. So I wanted to extend thanks to Emily Wallant for her 10 years with the DPS, and also Officer Hilleck for his 25 years. And on a summar note, I just wanted to send my prayers to the family of the two children killed in Monroe attending a birthday party, and all the others seriously injured and affected by that tragedy. Just another sad example of the poor decision made by someone who decided to drink and drive. And with that, I yield.
Thank you, Matthew. Mr. Marcos.
Last. I'm, being up here in the council and listening to everybody's remarks, it makes me, and Mr. Blevins especially, makes me think about what our job is and, and who we actually serve. And it's, you know, there, there's a handful of people that think that we serve just them, when in reality, it's 28-plus-thousand people that we, we have to work, work for. And it's very difficult to make everybody happy. As anyone knows who's ever had a job with a boss, you, you're just not going to, it just doesn't happen. But the obvious end result is you want the majority, the majority of the people, what's best for the city. That's what everybody's here for, what's best for the city. You look around what's going on in the city right now, roads are being done, parks are done, alleys are being done, new businesses are popping up, cleanup volunteers are through the roof. People are getting involved in the city, and it's the greatest thing to see. When, when, when the people get involved, that's when you know things are going well. And people are getting involved. So, and then the events, we have events going on every week, sometimes two or three. There's something happening in Allen Park all the time, and I think it's a great time to live in Allen Park right now with all that's happening. And it speaks a lot to the department heads and our administrator, who takes care of the money and keeps us afloat and keeps us on the right side of the, of the books, and still gets everything done. And I want to thank them for all their hard work and their, their working together. That includes everybody, everybody that works for this city. Again, other things, I want to congratulate Emily and Michael for their, their years of service. Again, greatly appreciated. And I think, again, speaks a lot to the city. 10 years, 25 years, it's, that's, it speaks loudly. Went to the farmer's market. The farmer's market is killer. Oh my God, we had so much fun. I think I dropped a hundred dollars there in 10 minutes. Pierogies, oh, Schrodex is the best. And then the Street Eater, he was there with their sliders. So, you know, it was, it was great to have some fun there. Again, something happening in the city, happening every week, events all the time. So I hope the people of the, the city notice this and, and, and take notice of it. And I believe that they are, because the turnouts have been outstanding. So other than that, pretty much all I have to say, other than my usual, it is German Beer Day. It is Cherry Cheesecake Day. And something that has really been bothering me lately, watching television and all the commercials, it's U.S. English, English Language Day. I don't know if you've paid attention to the posts on Facebook, but people need to retake English classes. It's, it's getting bad. It's bad. And with that, I yield. Good night. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you. Mike, you're going to have to wait a minute, because I got an email from Mr. Astimer, who asked that I please include his notes in comments for tonight. So I am doing that. This is from Tim. Reminder, I am not at council meeting tonight as I'm attending the Michigan Municipal Treasurer Training. This is the first training of three required to earn my This is the first training of three required to earn my Michigan CPT, which is Michigan Certified Professional Treasurer Certification, and one step closer to my national certification, CPFA. Love acronyms. Also, as a reminder, those that were delinquent with their real property taxes must pay at the county as of April one. However, if you are a business and delinquent on your personal property, our second notice of three went out last week, and those delinquent accounts can be paid here at the city. Lastly, I wish to thank Mark Kibbie, Amanda Wertz, Angela Lovelock, and the Department Clerks Kristen Zotter and Sadie Dandy and Darlene Swovland, as well as our assessors for their help with my transitioning into my role as City Treasurer. Their help and guidance has been truly amazing, what a fantastic team. Thank you. Timothy Astheimer. Mr. Mizzi.
Thank you all for coming out, God bless you and good night.
Well, since, you know, I'm really glad that Mr. Barr mentioned the Motorcycle Awareness Month. People need to, as he was talking about that, it occurred to me that I know several people who lost loved ones because people weren't paying attention. One goes back maybe about five years, and somebody made a left turn in front of him, and his wife, who I know quite well, said at least he was doing something he loved, but it was totally unnecessary, kind of like the drunk driving. And I ran across something else that we need to be aware of all the time, but apparently April fifteenth through the nineteenth was National Work Zone Awareness Week, and that just happened to pop up the other day in the paper, so they were a little late. But one of the statistics was that last year, MDOT documented seven thousand two hundred and thirty-seven work zone crashes that led to twenty fatalities, including two road workers. Another one thousand eight hundred and ninety-six people were injured in work zone crashes, one hundred and eight seriously. So we all get in a hurry once in a while, but there's laws too. When you see something, a work crew, when you see a car or a police vehicle pulled over to the right, one of the first things you need to do is move over a lane if possible, and the second thing, if you can't move over, is to slow down. These things shouldn't happen, the drunk drivers shouldn't happen, those infuriate me. So just be careful and be aware when you're out there, and pay attention, pay attention when you're driving. Please don't be distracted. Was also contacted by one of our Chaplain Corps members, who advised that Thursday, May second, is the National Day of Prayer, and we are going to have a ceremony here at City Hall at one o'clock on Thursday, May second, at the flagpole where they will be celebrating the National Day of Prayer. When we get more information and finalize that, we will let everyone know, and we will have that posted. And as Nancy mentioned, the draft starts on the twenty-fifth, and she's going to bring us back all kinds of information and share her experiences with us. I think, yes, congratulations to those who are celebrating milestones. For those who don't know, Ms. Wallent is the one at the DPS who fields a lot of the GFL calls, and we are eternally grateful to her for handling them in the fine manner that she does. I've passed along a few things to her, and she's just been exemplary in how they were handled, so we really do appreciate every one of our employees. We all benefit from having the staff that we have. So thank you all very much, and with that. Detective Fels, was there something, I understand that you could share with us, please do.
Hi, Madam Mayor, Council. I'm here to address the kids on bikes. It is a problem, we've had problems with these youths for a while. What I propose we could start doing is, video always helps because lots of times, we are too late. We don't know who the kids are, we know who some of them are, we've taken action against them, but if we had a video, if the officer even came after, we could do a report just as if we had do a reckless driver. That's a civil fraction not committed in our presence, but we could take a report, take it to the prosecutor, see if they'd sign on it, and then we could hold them accountable once we figure out who they were. I could tell the SRO to try putting the word out through the schools, but there is a problem, as the councilman said, that they don't have anything to take their actions to. That may help, some of these youths are incorrigible, they defy you regardless, but it would be nice to have a place to work on and get a skate park, a bike park, but that's money and that's down the road, but we do have the problem with that circling of the car, I believe that happened. I've dealt with the youths myself, they're frustrating, I was off-duty, you know, I was just any other citizen at that point. You know, you do your best you can to deal with it, but yeah, it'd be nice to get a face with a name, send it to the court, let them deal with it, it could interfere with their driver's license at some point, because they have to follow the road laws as a driver does. There's certain laws that bike riders have as well. You can't run a stop sign, they're supposed to, I mean, I know every bike rider does it, I ride a bike for a living, but you are still to adhere to the road laws. They're supposed to stay to the right side of the road. There's a whole thing on Michigan State webpage of bike rules and guidelines, and Michigan legislation has actual laws. But yeah, there's things we can do, it's just responding to them often takes time, but I'm going to put an email out tomorrow to address if the officer should get a call to take a report, and detectives will handle it and then send it to the court. And then if the court wants to issue on that, if we can figure out who the youth is, then we can go like that, and hopefully it can slow down this problem. But I know it is a problem, I've seen the kids, and yeah. And be safe when you're going downtown, for anybody going downtown, have heightened senses like Spidey, because criminals also seek out those events, so just if you feel something's off, you know, hold your purse, wallets, pickpockets, drive in this helmet. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, very much. And I'm, thank you very much for that, Detective Fels, because it reminded me that I understood what Dan was saying, and we've got to comp positive individuals. The ones that are doing what Mr. McGusson described are not the ones that are seeking a skate park or a bike park. They are, we've seen them, and I know that Mr. Wertzbacher can attest to this, we've seen them at the street fair jeopardizing people, and some of them have an attitude, and it's a good thing I'm not their parent. At any rate, because if I were, they wouldn't be there doing that. At any rate, I think we said all we're going to say this evening, so if I could have a motion to adjourn?
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Valerius. Second by Mr. Marcos. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, we are adjourned at six fifty-eight, please everyone be safe and enjoy life.